Welcome to the October 11th, I mean, February 11th, planning board meeting, it'll come to order. For those of you who do not typically attend these, just so you know, if there are any hearings tonight that we need to go through and deal with, deal with votes or anything like that, we will do roll call votes if necessary. We will allow an opportunity for those who wish to speak during hearings or in formal discussions to get some of their points of view across if necessary. And with that, I think I'll just ask Paige to step forward and give us her report for tonight.
Sure. Thanks, Kevin.
You're welcome.
Okay, so I've been busy this week working on finalizing the town meeting warrant articles. And I think as of this afternoon, they're done. So town meeting is scheduled for May 10th. The planning board has four articles on the warrant. I've been saying three, but I kept forgetting about the street acceptance. So we have, and as you recall, two of them are to fix issues. One is associated with assisted living. And that's just to correct the bylaw from what we feel was somewhat of a mistake that was made to make sure that that's correct to pre-codification. Baker Street Historic District, again, no change to the district proposed, just making sure that we have the correct map and the correct reference in the town code. The big one that's changed is the floodplain overlay district. When I say big, I mean, it's long, it's a lot of words, but it's something that's mandated by the state and by FEMA. Because if we don't pass it as a town, then nobody in the town of Foxborough will be eligible for flood insurance. So obviously, that's something that really isn't optional. So we've basically been working with the state and we now, as of today, believe we have it finalized. And then finally, Congdon Circle is up for street acceptance. So that's where we are going to then, next steps of war will be finalized. I don't think it has to be issued till sometime at the end of March or early, mid-April. But we need to get it in good shape to start moving through the advisory committee. So those will be the next steps once they get there, they'll see it next week, I believe. The next item is, speaking of advisory committee, we go into the advisory committee next Wednesday night, 7:00 PM. If anybody wants to join me. It's, I would have to post if there were three meetings, more than three people. That said, it's always a very quick discussion. I'm hoping it won't be too difficult and because I actually have an EDC meeting at the same time. So I'm going to be at AdCom and I'm hoping it's only 15 minutes or so. And then I'll be buzzing right over to EDC. So let me know if you have any interesting attending that meeting. That also is on Zoom, so as with all meetings in Foxborough. And then quickly, I'll run through some grants. We've been really busy on grants. We filed the rail trail feasibility study on February 1st. And we, that could take a bunch of months to hear back from. But we feel like we have a pretty strong application for that. And as you recall, that would run from uptown, basically somewhere around Mechanic Railroad Ave to Foxborough, to Foxborough Station/Patriot Place, trying to connect the uptown area to Patriot Place. Then we also just received notification that we'll be getting a grant or we've, we're eligible for technical assistance through the local rapid recovery planning program. I think I've already mentioned that. I still don't exactly know what they're going to be assisting with us with. They want to scope it. But they, we will find out in the next month or so. I did put in for assistance with uptown parking and kind of coming up with an overall parking plan and whatnot. So we'll see if that's, I think that's the direction we're heading. But I figured we better put in for it. The big project that we just did this week was, Foxborough took the lead on a project, which is the five towns. It's Mansfield, Norton, Walpole, Medfield, Foxborough. And we applied for a $250,000 grant for assistance with creating an inventory of all land, commercial land and buildings in the community, helping us figure out how to keep that database active on our individual websites. And then also to help us evaluate recovery efforts and impacts, any financial impacts, if the sort of market changes, you know, if we start to see office uses really pivot out of, you know, office space over on, say, Foxborough Boulevard, you know, what impact will that have and how can the town adapt to that? I've already received a call about a hotel over there that might be underperforming. And they were, it wasn't a hotel calling, it was a prospective, somebody looking at future uses for that type of use. So we wanted to get there, offering this up to $250,000 for regional programs. And so this is a big one that we're going for. It'll be quite interesting to see what we get. And we just got that in at 4:00 PM yesterday. So that was a big deadline. We also got assistance for $30,000 in technical assistance for a consultant to assist the housing authority and kind of me with getting an RFP ready for the Walnut Street project. That was the next big step. It's really complicated. It has to be 30B compliant, which is the procurement laws. So we have a lot to do. It does include a component of visioning, so the community can get a little bit involved in what we're going to do out there. But again, I always have to caution that the more the town gets involved in design and stipulating too, too much, the less market interest there tends to be. And I know that we're quite concerned already about the market, but, and financing and the whole environment right now. So it's going to, might take some time. I was talking to the housing authority and it could take some time still to get this off the ground. But we're going to be working earnestly towards that. We're still hoping to file for a MassWorks grant soon. They actually already changed the whole way of doing that. And the letter of interest are due soon. So we have to get in that universe of permitting that they've now released for that. So we're working towards that. The good news is, we did learn that Chris Gallagher believes that Mastod has backed off on their requirement that the town design and evaluate a roundabout at the Walnut Street intersection. We had gotten a grant to design a signal. And then at the 11th hour, when it was being, the signal design was being reviewed by Boston DOT, they said that all projects now require a review of roundabouts. So on that, we didn't have funding, we didn't have scope for that. But fortunately, it seems, they seem to believe that is not warranted there, which we kind of all thought. And lastly, if anybody from the public is watching, if you have friends and neighbors that have a small business in Foxborough, five or fewer employees, we are still trying to give away up to $10,000 in grants. So people should call me if you have a small business in Foxborough that's five or fewer, just to see if you're eligible. Housing production plan, our next steps are going to be talking to the public. We have a group of people that have been working on housing and working on the issues. So we're going to ask them to make some cable shows and talk about why they got involved. We're also going to bring in some town staff to talk about some of the concerns that were raised, you know, utilities, I mean, infrastructure and schools and financials. So we're working on that plan right now to start figuring out how to answer the questions that were raised during the comment period. And then lastly, the fire station is still working towards an April close. And we're, I'm working on getting the land swap between 17 Centennial and 15 to 17 Market Street done because we, and that involves coordinating with the state, which can be a challenge just from a legal review perspective. But we are working so that when Doug King gets ready to demolish the old funeral home, he can demolish the old housing authority property at the same time. So we're on track to that. And that is my update right now.
Okay, thank you very much. Gab, anything on type of subdivisions or anything else we need to discuss?
Yeah, actually, I, today I had a conversation with Ron Bonvy, the developer for Lawson Farm. He still owes us some money for bond. We are still holding lots that the board voted to release pending the submission of the monies. He's getting ready to submit that money. He is also looking to start phase two this season. So he said he has quite a few people that are interested in purchasing homes there. So that's, that's moving, moving along now again. He said that they had some issues with people being sick with COVID. And so they've, they've gotten over that, so they're, they're, they're moving forward.
Minutes from January 14th.
Excuse me, Kevin, can I ask Paige one question, please? Paige, is there any possibility of state money coming forward for this wastewater management situation that town is now faced with?
What are we facing?
Well, this new wastewater management that we have to start doing, it went into effect in January. New requirements for the town.
Well, I don't know, am I aware of it? I don't know what it is.
Gary, is that the one that was just in the paper?
Yeah, exactly. I didn't read much of it, but yes.
Oh, MS4?
Yes. Yes, yes, exactly, MS4. I mean, they're talking about $500,000 of the cost of the town. I'm just curious if the state's prepared to step in. I'm sure we're not the only town with an issue.
I doubt it. This MS4 has been looming for years and years and every town's in that, in the same situation. And I know some towns are actually, I think Frank, oh no, Foxborough, didn't they just talk about the utility? So we look, as you can see, we look at every grant out there. We're pretty aggressive on grants right now. That's not where the state seems to be heading. Right now, it's in the COVID recovery. But even prior to that, we weren't really seeing this MS4, you know, grants being offered. But we continue to look.
I just didn't know if the state was coming out with a program that they were going to just help out every town, get, at least get established with it, you know?
Not that I'm aware of, but I will check with Chris on that just to see. I'm sure, you know, he's, we all look so hard. I'm sure if it was there, we'd have it.
Thank you.
One last thing, Kevin, I forgot, my planner's report, is I spoke to Stefan Frye yesterday.
Yeah.
He called to give an update on 29 Wall Street. He, since we last spoke to him, as you know, his financing was pulled while the, while his bank figured out what the implications of COVID were last spring. And the board gave him an extension till June 30th. When I spoke to him a few months ago, his partner, Jack, had passed away.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, so, but since then, he has found a new investor slash partner. And they've put out their financials, whatever. So they're waiting for like the terms that come back from all the financial institutions and hoping to choose one. And they're, they're shooting for, you know, spring, you know, early summer start. So they're, they're in position to, you know, and they feel that the housing market is, remains so strong that they feel that the climate for the financing should be, will be good. So stay tuned, but he wanted us to let him know that he's still actively, you know, that he has his investor replaced and he is moving forward.
Okay. Good to know. So you have on here, we were going to do some minutes there for just one second. January 14th, 2021.
I sent out the minutes a few weeks ago. Nobody sent me back any comments, so everybody's okay.
I make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from January 14th.
Second. Those in favor? Yeah, roll call. Jeff Peterson, aye. Gary said aye. Jeff says aye. I think that's it. Unless John wants to step in.
I don't take any vote.
You're right.
You got five board members, so.
You're correct. There's an item on here to set performance guarantees, lot release request, River Ridge subdivision.
Yeah, we have a, submitted, Mr. Buckley submitted a request to set the bond for River Ridge. This is for the second face. We are currently holding 247,964 with 22 cents. And I did the calculations and included the 20% contingency. And so the total bond for completing both faces would be 511,447 dollars. And with an additional amount request of 263,482 dollars and 98 cents. So this amount plus the amount that we're holding would be the total amount for the, for the bond.
Any questions from anybody about that? Then I'll entertain a motion to set the performance bond at the, what's the total amount again? Gab, the additional amount?
511,447 dollars.
So are we voting on that or just the additional 200 and change?
You can do both.
Okay.
So just, just as a total amount and then, you know, we'll, we'll do that.
So I'm sorry, the total amount again was what, 500?
11,000.
511,447 dollars. 447 dollars, do I hear a second to that motion?
Second.
Roll call vote on approving that?
Tracy Vassili, yes.
Kevin Weinfeld, yes?
Jeff Peterson, yes.
Ron?
I seconded it.
Oh, you did, okay, very good then.
We also have a request to release lots for that subdivision. They are requesting the release of lots, nine through 17th. This would be releasing all of the lots remaining for the subdivision. And if the board would consider approving the release or discussing that.
So, so Gabby, does the, the new bond amount cover all those additional lots?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions or comments from anybody on the board?
I just assumed that that, any approval should be subject to receiving the total bond amount that we just voted upon.
That's correct, yes.
I'll entertain a motion to release the, the, the four said lots.
I'll make a motion to release the four said lots upon receipt of.
One second. Roll call vote?
Tracy, yes.
I'm sorry?
Tracy, yes.
Gary, yes.
Kevin, yes?
Jeff says yes.
Ron, you still have to vote even if you motion or second.
Thank you. If the board members would please stop by the office next week to sign the form, that would be appreciated.
Okay, we're closed Monday, so don't, not on Monday.
All right, so it being sometime past 7:15 PM, we have a continued public hearing, special permit onsite, ground mounted solar photovoltaic installation, Nine Maple Place, Isaacson Solar.
Mr. Weinfeld, I have one more thing. We have the request to set the bond for 106 South Street as well.
Oh, I apologize, I thought we did that.
No, we did River Ridge.
Go ahead with that, please.
Yeah, we have another one.
Before we go back to the continued public hearing, so tell us about the performance for that.
Mr. Lynch had submitted earlier a request to set a bond. But after we said the bond, there was work that was done to the subdivision. So he resubmitted a request. And with the 20% contingency, the, the total amount, this is a small subdivision. So the total amount for the bond would be 23,783 dollars and 45 cents.
So is that the individual house that's there on South Street?
Yes.
I'm sorry, 23,000?
783 with 45 cents.
Do I hear a motion to approve that bond amount?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I think Ron seconded it.
He did.
Roll call vote, I'll, I'll say aye.
Tracy says yes.
Gary, aye.
Jeff says yes. And Mr. Bresson?
They say yes.
We also have a request to release the lot where the house would sit. So this is lot number two. If you could vote to release the lot upon the submission of the bond money.
Do I hear such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, roll call vote, Kevin Weinfeld says yes.
Tracy Vassili says yes.
Gary, aye.
Jeff says yes. And I think Ron said yes. Okay.
Thank you.
We'll lock this down by the end of the meeting. Yeah, it'll be, it'll work. So now then, it's slightly past 7:15 PM, continued public hearing, special permit, onsite, ground mounted solar photovoltaic installation, Nine Maple Place from Isaacson Solar.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. This is Mike Corey of, from Madoff and Corlaxboro here for the contractor, Isaacson Solar, and the property owner, Mr. Alinsky, at Nine Maple Place. As you may remember, you've had two prior meetings where a proposal for a ground mount solar panel set was presented after a building permit was, was issued inadvertently and incorrectly. And the, the app, the property owner and contractor came in for a, a special permit. We had, at the last meeting a month ago, extensive discussions and opposition from neighbors, particularly the neighbor directly across the street. Mr. Alinsky and Isaacson Solar have modified the plan so as to reduce the top row and reduce the slope from 30 to 20 degrees. And that would effectively reduce the height of the, of the mount from 12 feet, 12 and a half feet to eight feet. Mr. Alinsky has collected a petition that was submitted to the board from approximately 10 of his neighbors supporting his program. And I believe the, the party across the street who had, had discussed at length, his opposition is now in favor or doesn't oppose the proposal now. If you'd like, I could share my screen and show you the revised proposal that was submitted by paper, in paper form.
You're welcome to do that.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay. So this is a summary of, of Mr. Alinsky's, the reasons why he wants to have the mount installed, raises the property value in those around him, in his, in his opinion. It's good for the environment. He'll achieve, he expects $100,000 in savings over a long-term 25-year period and lessens the burden on the town to provide utility resources. What, this was the proposal we presented to the board last month. It shows the array and Mr. Camille from Isaacson Solar, if I'm misstating anything, if you could correct me. But what, as, as I understand it, the top row of the panels will be eliminated. I'm sorry, the side, one side of the panel will be eliminated. The angle changed and the landscaping around it will be maintained. Mr. Camille, have I described the revised proposal correctly?
Yeah, you've given a pretty good idea of what we were talking about. This rendition of it shows the panels in portrait. What's actually going to be installed is the panels are going to be in a landscape position. So if we all know, when we go to print, like a Word document, you can choose between portrait style and a landscape style. What is going in portrait, it's going to be landscape. The original plan was to have six panels high in landscape in the topmost row. We are going to amend that, hopefully, remove that top row of panels and basically relocate those, those five panels at the top into another row on the side. What that basically is going to do is it's going to make it slightly longer towards Al's garage area there on the right and reduce the overall height by the width of one panel, which is greater than three and a half feet. In addition, we are going to make an amendment. The as-built ground mount has a 30-degree slope. We are able to amend that down to 20 degrees. So the lessening of slope from 20 degrees to 30 degrees, there's less of a severe slant, I guess, to that. So it's going to flatten out a bit. And then removing that entire top row is effectively lowering your entire structure nearly five feet. It's going from 12 and a half feet tall to about eight feet tall in the rear. And the front leading edge there is about 24 inches off the ground.
And page two of the document that I'm sharing shows the signatures of Mr. Alinsky's neighbors supporting the, the plan, the proposal that we have here as revised. We were hoping that the board would give us an indication, either a vote to support or an indication of what they might need, if anything else, to get on board with this revised proposal. Again, we haven't, we don't have a specific drawing showing the angle. But we would, we wanted to get this before the board to show that we've made progress, given the fact that it's been before you for two months.
So let me ask you a quick question, Mr. Corey. The signatures that are here, are any of those individuals, the individuals who were in opposition at the last, at the last discussion? In other words, are they all above the street, higher above his house in the apartment area? Or are they below and across the street from him, i.e. the individuals who were showing, sharing their concerns the last time?
As you can see, again, I don't know the specific addresses of the folks that were objecting and maybe, maybe Mr. Alinsky does or, or Mr. Camille. But you can see that the, the property address is Nine Maple Place. The folks at 10 Maple Place, 11, 13, 4, 10, support the, the proposal. Brad, Alex, do you, can you speak to whether folks that were speaking in opposition last month have signed off on this?
Can I talk or?
Sure.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
So just to also, I want to add on, the members of Two Maple Places, the White House at the corner, they informed me that they are neutral towards this, but they did not want to sign because they did not want to pick a side. So I, Peter did not sign it. We had a conversation ourselves. And the other party from, I believe, Six Maple Place, he said that he'll sign on and he'll, he'll see what happens. He said he wasn't comfortable signing right now, but that could change later. We talked about lowering it or turning to carport or something. And he said that it was moving in the right direction. But he said that he was not comfortable signing anything at the time. This was, of course, before I spoke with Peter and then I hadn't spoken to him since. So Two Maple Place wanted to remain neutral. Eight Maple Place also says, you know, that they don't have a problem with it, but they want to remain neutral, so they didn't want to put a signature down. And Six Maple Place says that it's kind of, he was against it and it's to be determined. So that's, and that's the best I can give you. Everybody else signed. Were you guys able to hear that? I don't know how my.
Yes, yes.
Okay. And I told them, you know, we're going to make it as low as possible. I'm going to fill the front yard with like trees and gardening because I understand, you know, the view is important. And I would even put like maybe arborvitae trees up again. And I would even put like maybe arborvitae trees up against the fence by my detached garage. That go up maybe not six feet, seven or eight feet to make sure that if Peter looks out his window, he'll just see the tips of the trees and my, the rest of my property. And it'll block out the, um, the solar panels because we also noticed that in full bloom for eight months out of the year, the trees basically cover the panels as they are now. So if they are to be lower and I put up arborvitae's, uh, they will almost entirely block out the, uh, the view.
So, um, I think it would be, I mean, I, I, I know that there were some, some of your, some of your other neighbors, uh, were on the screen earlier. I don't know if any of them, uh, would like to comment on the new proposal and, uh, hear what they have to say about it.
Mr. Curry, can you unshare your screen so that we can? Thank you.
Yeah, Paige, thank you. So if there's any of the, um, neighbors, Mr. Jebson or Mr. Kagan or any of the other, the neighbors who had issues with the last meeting, I'd like to hear how they feel about this alteration and see if there's any.
Yeah, uh, Kevin, it's Peter Jebson. Uh, so, um, I did speak with Alex and he mentioned his revisions. But i- i- in light of the fact that he said if his permit was denied, he was going to put panels, uh, on top of his garage or build a carport and put the panels on top of a carport, which would be, um, actually a worse situation from our point of view. So, in li- in light of that and in the spirit of compromise, if we could get a, a guarantee on this new design, which as I understand would be lowered, that everything above the, that bar would be eliminated, it would be elongated. Now, uh, Alex's lawyer said it would be extended toward his garage, but Alex says, I understood you the other day. The extension would go toward the street.
Uh, to the best of my knowledge, I thought it was to the street unless it goes towards the garage and it's the upper row. Uh, Brad, could you comment? I just want to make sure I'm not losing out on any solar energy.
Yeah, sure. Um, I think if, it may help if I share my screen as well, as long as that's okay with the board. Let me see if I can do this here. Let's see here. Everybody see this, uh, photo here?
Yep.
Okay, so this is, this is an existing photo of what's in the ground right now. Um, what we're effectively asking for, and you can see on the, on the right side, you know, even though it's not really descriptive as to what that is differently than what's in the ground. As you can see, this is going to be five rows high. And what that actually means is, you can see this kind of crossbar here where my cursor is. If I can zoom in a little bit, basically, anything above that bar, um, is going to be, uh, removed. Okay, and then what also is going to happen is, again, if I can zoom in a little bit, basically cutting off this top side. Now that affects the structure, so we have to, uh, move a couple of poles inward. Um, and then we are going to be limiting the existing slope from thirty degrees, basically down to twenty degrees. What that may involve is going slightly closer to the, um, road. However, we're, we're pretty close to our dimensional setback requirement of twenty-five feet. Uh, this was installed at thirty feet. Um, so we want to try and keep it where it is so that we are within the, um, dimensional setback requirements of the town without then, you know, having to go for a variance kind of thing. Um, and then basically these top panels that were on this other side up here, essentially are only going to be added on this right side.
How many, how many feet, do you know how many feet that is? Is it, is, it's equivalent to what you're taking off basically?
Yeah, we're relocating the top row of panels. Basically, there's going to be, there were six panels on top here. And we're just getting those to the right edge so that the height is not, um, going to be as visible. Uh, again, we're, we're chopping off basically four and a half feet and relocating those six panels onto, I'm sorry, those five panels, uh, onto the right side of this diagram, uh, which is closer to the garage. Um, which effectively, they're actually going to be shaded out a little bit from the garage and they'll actually be obstructed. Um, most of those panels are going to be obstructed from your view based on, um, a couple of the studies that I've, I've looked at here.
Right, and the, the only other thing I would say, uh, you know, was that he mentioned this idea about a carport or putting panels on top of his garage, which you really can't see here, but really literally hangs over my yard. Now this would be in lieu of not doing that, I assume. Or it won't be done in the future.
Yeah, we're, we're limited by the state as to how big a system can actually be, Peter. Um, so if, if Alex moves forward with, you know, just doing the, um, or if, if you're okay with us doing the, the, there's smaller ground mounted system, uh, there is no need to do any more panels. Um, and he is not going to do anything. He's given me, me his word, um, that he, you know, is totally fine with doing it as is with the ground mount. We're not all of a sudden going to add that to, uh, put it on the.
Well, I, I mean, is, is that the case, Alex? I mean?
You, you, since this meeting is recording, uh, is fully recorded, that is the case. You have my word and it is now recorded video.
That's fine. That's, that's fine, that's fine. Um, well, I mean, yeah, like I said, you know, and in this, as a compromise and, and, uh, Alex is in a tough spot, I, you know, I could, I could go with it. You know, I could go with this, this revised, uh, addition. If, uh, that's what it's going to take, I'd be okay with it. I mean, I'm not thrilled about the whole thing, obviously, but like I said, in the spirit of compromise, that's, we, we would, we could go along with it.
And in, in my experience, Peter, with, with previous customers as well, um, you know, this isn't my first ground mount that, that a, that a neighbor has, you know, obviously had some objection to. Um, in the past, we've had a couple of examples of, um, something similar where, you know, you can, you can put a trellis on this, on this edge of the system as, uh, as Al is, um, you know, talking about doing, where, you know, you're going to have that white trellis on that side of the system where basically all the steel that's there now is, is not going to be seen.
Yeah, and, and you know, the other thing is, I, I explained to Alex, it's not all ma- my decision. There were other people here across the street from him, so I don't, I'm not the, you know, one and only here. I mean, I've expressed my opinion, but, you know, there are, there are others who may have something to say, so.
Of course, of course. I just wanted.
And, and I wonder, so, and yeah, I don't know, Mr. Kagan hasn't even said or any other neighbor who's directly across from it. Um, has, has, uh, any opinion about the, the alteration and whether they feel it's more amenable or less or whatever?
Hi, um, hi, this is, uh, Hesh Kagan. Um, yeah, we spoke, uh, with Alex, uh, yesterday, I guess. Um, and I, I, I think the, uh, excuse me, taking, uh, taking the, uh, shape and size and orientation of the structure and modifying it is certainly a, a, a positive step in the right direction. We also though, discussed the carport from, from my perspective. Personally, I, I thought the carport was a, uh, that was described was a, a, a flat top structure, not angled in any way over the driveway. And I thought that was a pretty creative solution. But, um, I'm less affected visually from our house directly across the street than, than Rick is or Peter. You know, so from my perspective, again, it's, it would have been, would have been nicer in the backyard. But I, I appreciate the effort that Alex and the team has made to, to, to make adjustments. I, I just thought the carport was a very creative, uh, a flat, a flat top carport as opposed to something that was angled, was a very creative solution.
Anybody else like to add anything, Mr. Jakes? Just unmute yourself.
There you go. So, uh, I did talk to Alex yesterday. We were out talking for quite a while and he was going over his, uh, possible solutions, but I, I made, I just want to make it clear. I, I am not a fan of where it is, just because when I look out my windows, that's what you see, alright? Uh, you know, and, but I do appreciate what Alex is doing, trying to make adjustments and for me, you know, I don't want to come across as the one person that's holding us up, you know, that's not my intentions whatsoever, you know, that my, it, it affects my view, uh, you know, knocking off the tops will help Peter. Again, what Hesh said, you know, he doesn't have it. Uh, he's kind of kitty cornered to the angle of it, so it's not direct sightlines. Anyone ask Hesh, you know, the eleven thirteens, they, they don't see it whatsoever. And, you know, my best thought was that, you know, the garage scenario, but, you know, Alex kind of talked about that, the, the expense of it. If this is going to be the solution of it, and, you know, for me, it's going to have to be hidden better than, you know, you know, buying some lattice at Home Depot for me doesn't really, uh, correctly, you know, the issue as far as it would need more substantial, uh, kind of, if you want to say camouflage than, uh, is, you know, proposed for that. And you got to remember the, the trees and the, you know, the nice flowers, that, that's only there for a couple of months out of the year. The, the rest of the, the eight months that they're not there, it is visible. So, uh, but I appreciate, you know, what Alex is doing and I don't want to have any more cost. I want it to be as least expensive and functional and, you know, and I appreciate what he's trying to do. And I said, I'm all for solar. If my roof could handle it, I'd probably have it too. So, and I understand his, uh, roof lines, you can't put it on the roof. It's, it's impossible because, you know, it's a beautiful home and, but what I was wondering, and I said to Alex is, was there any site test done, physical site test done where they actually put, uh, meters in the back and they recorded, uh, what, not, not a computer generated, you know, thing? Or if they could drop the, uh, top of the, some of the back trees off, I don't know. I don't know what, uh, due diligence was done to, uh, come up with this location. Obviously, this would be the cleanest location where they have it now for the, you know, best exposure. But what's a, what's an acceptable, uh, rate of return on sunlight and how much does it get? And Brad probably can speak better to that, uh, and hopefully, you know, it's some good answers there. Uh, like I said, I've never seen these around anywhere. I've never seen anyone in the front yard and there's a good reason for that. Uh, I don't find it attractive personally. And I think that's why, I'm sure they do exist, but they're always in a location that's, you know, not in, you know, straight view. But it is what it is, so I appreciate the time.
Brad, can you address any of Mr. Jakes' questions?
Yeah, sure.
Video?
So we use, um, we use a, a design software called Aurora Solar. Um, it's a very expensive, um, cutting edge technology that uses LiDAR data, uh, basically with, um, overhead planes that shoot these, um, you know, invisible beams of light down, um, basically like sonar, right? Like, like if you picture a, uh, a submarine and a submarine's beeping and it measures the distance of how long your, your beep comes back to you. It's basically the same thing except for light. Um, and these planes basically go over, oversight and sometimes it's satellites, sometimes it's planes. And it gives you a minute measurement on how a high your elevations are. Um, of your trees, of your buildings, of your vehicles, you know, if there was people there, it could tell you how high the, the people are. Before this design software existed, there was, uh, a tool, a physical tool called a Suneye. Um, and there was a, several versions of this Suneye. Basically, you could, you could stand where you wanted to put your, your solar panel installation and you look through the scope at the sun and it gives you a reading. Then you can record your reading and then you do that at various spots and take a survey. Um, the Department of Energy, um, and Resources of Massachusetts accepted Aurora Solar to basically replace, um, that tool, that Suneye tool as the gold standard and the minimal technical requirement, uh, and basically to, to set the standard of solar estimates as far as how much sun is available and then how you figure out how much power you're going to get. So this very advanced, expensive software, um, takes all of that into consideration, takes in the LiDAR data set and takes in, into consideration the heights of the trees, the elevation and basically, um, is able to do math that I would never be able to do. Uh, that people way smarter than me have figured out to put into this, uh, um, algorithm um, and, and spit out, you know, some really accurate numbers. And we have, you know, over eight hundred installed systems over the last couple of years and, you know, we're within four percent of, of our estimates, uh, using this software exclusively. Again, it's accepted entirely by, uh, the Department of Energy Resources of Massachusetts. Um, it was using this software that I originally talked to Al. You know, we started on the roof and really quickly started that, can't get enough panels on there to start with, to even get us close to what he needed. Um, not to mention the safety factor with my guys being on that roof, I, I wasn't going to do it. Um, then we looked at the backyard for a ground mount. We looked at the output. Um, I could show you real numbers right now if, if the board wants me to go into that. I think, I think we've talked about this in previous meetings, so with respect to everyone's time, I think, um, unless it's absolutely necessary, I, uh, I won't do that, but if you guys need me to, I got it up and, and ready to go. Um, but basically we compared these two sites and it is close to a forty percent drop in power if you put it in the rear of the property. And there's basically an efficiency line. There's an efficiency number. And if it's below a certain number, uh, then typically, it's, it's, in my opinion, not ethical to, to do a project because then you're, rate of return, your, your return on investment is too far forward where, uh, it doesn't make sense. You know, if it's going to take you twenty-five years to pay off a system, I ethically, I, I'd like not to do that, you know? I, I don't want to put solar panels in the shade. Um, I realize that there may have been a garden back there at some point, but we've talked to in previous, uh, meetings how, you know, there's, there's different sunlight factors for gardens than there is for, for solar. The spot that we put it in was within our dimensional setbacks. And we relied on the authority having jurisdiction, meaning Foxborough Building Department, to tell us if this was valid. And, um, here we are. And now that it's here and now that we are, um, into our project, we're going to make every effort we can to make it as visually appealing as possible. I agree, uh, buying a Home Depot trellis and just putting it up there isn't enough. Um, you know, that's why Al wants to, to really beautify this space, um, out of respect for his neighbors and respect for his own property. Um, he's even mentioned to me that he'd be willing to, to plant, you know, a, a, a natural fence along that street line, uh, to get some arborvitae's in there. And arborvitae's are evergreens, they don't lose their leaves and that would be year round. I think that satisfies that. If you guys want me to look, uh, deeper level to really show you the analytics and, and the comparison of power between the rear and the, and the side yard of what we're doing, I can do that. Um, but I think we've, we've talked about that in previous meetings, so I don't want to be too, too redundant, uh, with this point.
Any comments from the board or anybody else at the moment?
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Chair.
Yeah, please.
Yep, um, I just, I had been, uh, inclined to view this, uh, application favorably in the first place. I'm very pleased now to see that there's been some movement, uh, on, uh, improving the original submission. I, in a response to talk about screening or other planting type approaches, I think it would be appropriate under the circumstances to require as a condition of any approval that a formal, uh, landscape plan be submitted along with, I assume there's going to have to be revisions to our existing submission at any rate. Uh, and I think that that should be, uh, required to incorporate that as part of the overall submission, uh, before we go forward formally.
Anyone else?
Uh, can you guys hear me? I don't know if I'm raising my hand or what. Am I still muted?
Am I still muted? Alex?
Yes, please.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I'm I'm totally okay with that. I was just gonna comment. I I could put down like, you know, four or five large, six, uh, seven foot arborvitae's to kind of, you know, when they're spaced out, they create a certain kind of illusion and also block a certain amount of, uh, of the view, amount of the view and, um, with a thinner panel of of eight feet and the the everything going uphill, the six foot arborvitae are gonna appear to be larger and I'm a hundred percent okay with that. I was planning on doing some beautiful landscaping to make sure that, uh, you know, when when people drive on the street, they'll barely, if not completely, be not be able to see those panels. Cause my yard is so big, I can put the arborvitae all the way at the edge and so when people drive up the street, all they're gonna see are the trees.
And I think that's, uh, oh, great, Alex. My only point is that I I just don't want this to go forward as sort of a, you know, fly by the seat of your pants operation in terms of any plantings that are done. I think the board would like to see exactly what you have in mind, you know, for this, this part of the project and because it is an important part of the project, obviously, for your neighbors. So, it doesn't mean it has to be any more elaborate or any less elaborate than you might have done otherwise. It just means to say that we wanna see it upfront before there's a final approval.
Okay, so that's, uh, I think, I think that's fair. Brad, what do you think? I don't, I I'm not, uh, a connoisseur on the price of arborvitae's, but um, I'm guessing what, like a few big ones, like five or six, you want two, three thousand dollars?
Not even, not even near that.
Yeah, I think, um, yeah, I think it's very reasonable to to plant arborvitae's, but I think, um, what Mr. Peterson is asking for is a legitimate landscaping, um, you know, diagram. I I
Correct.
Almost like a
Landscaping diagram. I I have a landscaper.
Which we can, it's more than
Like a picture of my yard and where the 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 or do you want a landscape architect or do you want like just a picture of the yard and where the the trees would be going? Cause there there, those are two different things from my understanding. One's definitely more expensive than the other, but they both essentially do the same thing.
That, that's correct and I don't necessarily, I'm not suggesting and I I I don't wanna dictate what you need to do here. I don't think you need to go to that length. I I do think that we just want to see a visual representation of what you propose to do so that we can hold you to it if, for whatever reason, things go south.
I can have my landscaper on the phone tomorrow. Alright, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll, we, I think that's more than fair.
I have a question for Alex, if he would.
Yes.
Alex, you said you did this on a previous property you you have?
I did, but it was, it was roof mounted, yes.
All roof mounted?
Yeah, it was roof mounted.
That's where, how's it work out? Good system?
It was a six system. There were months, the 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 two hottest months in the summer, about a year ago, two years ago, we paid zero dollars for electricity and we ran the AC all summer long. Because spring was so good that we developed enough electrical credits to put our summer credits to zero.
Right, that increased the value of that property. You sold it? You sold that property?
We did, did sell the property. We bought the property for three hundred and sixty thousand dollars and we sold it for five hundred and twenty. We did a lot of whole, you know, our own, uh, renovation projects, like, you know, we changed the sign and whatnot. But the solar panels were a big sell selling point because a lot of, uh, first time buyers, when they first heard that they could buy a house and not pay for any electricity, uh, they were all jumping at the chance because just the idea to cut, cut a utility bill and then you can technically afford a little bit more of an expensive home because now you don't have that utility bill was a huge selling point for the
What are the possibilities? You're you're improving this property? You're just gonna sell it a year from now?
Uh, sir, this is my dream house and again, this video is being recorded right now. As far as I'm concerned, this is my forever home. Plus, I work in Cambridge and I don't think I'm gonna move any further than this because my commute would be hell.
Hey, Mr. Whitefield?
Yes.
Um, initially I was against this proposal, giving, given what we had seen. Uh, I do agree with what Jeff is saying tonight. What we're seeing now for the modifications is far more amenable and I would like to see a formal landscape plan, so as part of the condition if we go forward with a special permit.
I think that's fair.
Um, anybody else have any comments? Tracy?
I do. Gail Kagan?
Oh, please, Ms. Kagan.
Hi, uh, well, I'm at Eight Maple Place and I'm, I agree with Rhett that I would really wanna see something different there.
Can you be more descriptive?
Well, it is a very unattractive structure and if there was a landscape plan, I would kinda wanna guarantee.
That's totally fine. That's absolutely fine.
Me guarantee that he that he would plan exactly what was there?
Well, did it, yes.
Yeah, totally down with that. That's, I mean, obviously trees would have to be planted in the spring, you know, summer, but not like right now, but
Any tiny tree that doesn't really cover anything.
Yeah.
No, no, no. Arborvitae's, big thick ones, obviously.
You know, I I I think one of the the, um, the most important things that I'm hearing tonight is, um, compromise from the applicant, but also feeling that the neighbors feel like, uh, there's been some effort in order to, uh, hear what the things that they had to say and that while it's not perfect, um, uh, it is, it is an improvement over what the original plan was and it's something that they believe would be more livable for them. Not, not, not ideal, but certainly more livable to them. And I think that that goes a long way in terms of why you're hearing the board possibly have, uh, a little bit more, uh, you know, uh, of a feeling of of, uh, that the possibility is better. Is there someone else that even wanted to? I'm sorry, what'd you say?
I think Mr. Mahoney would like to speak.
Yeah, that's what I was just saying. He's raising his hand.
Hi, good, uh, good evening to the board. I actually read about this project and I'm, I don't live in that neighborhood, so of course I I won't live with it, but I drove by just to check it out, see what it was. And, uh, just, just a quick drive by, I saw the existing structure. I I would encourage the rest of the board to take a look. It it's not, it's not some big giant glaring thing. It it is definitely has a presence, but it's, it's pretty minimal and if it's gonna get cut down five feet and and hidden by trees, I think would be a pretty reasonable, uh, project just by, you know, someone with a very, very small outlook of it. Um, so thank you. I check, check it out if you haven't seen it already, so you can, uh, you know, better your decision on on this matter. Thank you.
We've definitely all seen it.
Yeah, Kevin?
Yes.
Um, you know, you you mentioned the neighbors tending to be more minimal to moving ahead with this. But I detect a little bit of, uh, they're not really in favor of it. They're just afraid of a possible alternative that was suggested.
Yes.
And I, and I think they're reluctantly signing onto this. They really don't want it. That's what I'm, I'm feeling. Signatures and no signatures. They they're not in favor of this. They're afraid of a threatened alternative of a carport or something like that.
And I would like to agree with Gary. Um, you know, I, you know, a lot of the signatures on that thing are renters versus homeowners and I think they they tend to have a different perspective understandably, but I do think that then, and I think, you know, the neighbors, I have to say, you've all been incredibly gracious, beyond gracious, but I do feel like they're going along because of the threat of a carport or something that's even more egregious in their neighborhood. So, while I'm glad they're feeling better, I'm not comfortable with how this played out at all. But I also feel for the homeowner who got a permit incorrectly from our building department. So.
Yeah, uh, can I throw a couple of words in?
Who's who's speaking? John?
John, yes.
Please.
Yeah. Uh, I tend to line up with the initial comments that Jeff offered. I I think it's a combination of of, uh, making some compromises. Uh, I think when you look at the project today with the bare metal, I think that sends a contrary message to what a finished product can be with proper landscaping. When you look at the, the six points in in zoning that we have to approve and comment on, four to six are not really applicable and the only two that are applicable uh, impact on the natural environment, which I think is a minimally positive because you're getting fuel for free, neighborhood character and social structures, which could go either way. Um, you know, I I, so I, when I look at that guidance, it's it's a tie. Uh, I want to commend the neighbors for coming forward and offering to compromise. I think that's a wonderful way to go about. I I I think the project can go forth with a good, tight decision and with, uh, some, uh, revisions made to the plan with some minor specifications as to plant numbers and type numbers and things like that, so that there's a plan that can be, that's produced, that's been worked out based on all the conversations. And if anybody says, well, I didn't understand that there's only five arborvitae's instead of four and it couldn't get to that level because there's a lot of interest, I want a good, tight plan and and a good, tight decision. My tendency would be to to go in 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 favor of the of the project. But my ears are open and that's my job as as the alternate board member to keep an, uh, an open opinion. And by the way, I think
Just one thing, John. There's a reason it's not allowed in that zone, except with a special permit. There's a reason for that.
Yeah, yeah, I I agree. There's a, Gary, there's a reason why, uh, the zoning was written the way it is. In a forty thousand square foot zone where I live, I can put it on my lawn if I want. Cause there's a lot of natural buffering.
Mr. Corey, there's something you wanted to add?
Yes, uh, thanks, Mr. Chair. Um, I just wanted to address, um, Mr. Alinsky is not trying to bully his neighbors into agreeing to anything. The altern, he needs to have solar, um, for him to, uh, manage the, uh, the economics of the property and the and his and his family finances. His alternatives would be, as I underst standard of right, uh, ability to put, um, panels on, uh, a roof and that, that isn't, uh, optimal for him and it isn't optimal for the neighbors. He's not trying, there isn't, there isn't a, an objective or even a subjective bullying here. It's just, he's exploring his of right options and the options that he would have, um, uh, through special permit. And I think the proposal that he and and, uh, Brad have presented, um, I think are the better one if the special permit, uh, were to be granted.
So, can I just, could I say something?
May.
Oh, okay. Hi, uh, just, uh, uh, Ms. Tracy, I I, you know, I'm sorry if I gave you the wrong impression of anything. I believe in my signatures, yes, while two people are renters, everybody, I know Ernest Guy is a homeowner. Uh, Bastio is a homeowner of Eleven Maple Place. The, uh, the Sullivans are, the owners of Four Maple Place. Um, and the the guy's obviously Ten Maple Place and then Twenty-Five Maple Ave is owned by, you know, that was the the owner. I didn't bully anyone. I asked them if they would, you know, be willing to sign. If not, there's no hard feelings and all of them said, you know, we're so sorry what's happening to videos, you know, please do whatever you want. There was no, there was no bullying in any wasn't going to rent me anyone or anything like that. Do I want this? I do and, you know, you know, we created it to to get it, but you know, I think, I think we're just compromising. I think we're just working together. I'm not trying to, you know, some sort of villain. Yeah.
Hi, um, this is Hi, Alex. Uh, this is Josie Sullivan. I'm at Four Maple. We, um, we hadn't joined previously because we didn't have any feelings one way or another towards it. And, um, so Alex came over and spoke to my husband and then spoke to us again yesterday and I I just wanna make it clear, we don't rent, we own. And right from the very beginning, even though we didn't have an opportunity to meet Alex and his family, we could tell that they were a nice young couple. They bought a beautiful home and we didn't think that they were gonna put something there that they weren't eventually going to try to, um, look better. They weren't gonna wanna bring down their own value of their own homes. And I I just wanna voice that, um, he did not bully, he did not intimidate, and I think he's working really hard to, um, meet the requirements that the other neighbors would like to see him make. And we're directly across the street. So when we look out our window or sit on our porch, we're also going to see it, but we're very pleased with every time they come back, they're putting up, you know, the the with the changes they're willing to make, where eventually we think it's, it's going to be fine. And I, we just wanted to make sure that, you know, he, we we spoke and let him know that nobody was was bullying us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, so, Mr. Chairman? I think, I I think before you can even get to the point of of getting a vote, I mean, you're getting kind of an idea of feeling of members of the board tonight, but I think before you can even get to the point of the vote, I think you're gonna have to do the detailed plan that that Jeff requested and the rest of the board seems to, uh, wanna see. And then, um, uh, I think at that point, uh, perhaps the board would be, would be ready to 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 turn, give a determination about whether they felt that the special permit should be granted or not.
Okay, I think that's absolutely fair and, uh, we'll, we'll try to get some sort of landscaping out and a diagram of the new design to to make it seem as sleek and visually unobtrusive as possible.
Yeah, and, um, if I may, Kevin, members of the board, just in closing here, um, you know, as the, as a solar company who's doing this work, um, you know, this is, this is a local company. This is Isaacson Solar. We are not, um, some coast to coast, you know, east to west in Texas. Like, we're not the Walmart of solar. Um, we are a small business and I am a partner in this business. And, you know, we have fifteen employees. And we've tried the entire time since we started our company, you know, five years ago to now is to to do whatever it takes to maximize our customers' energy savings, um, while also, you know, doing it ethically. Um, and we will make every effort to, uh, to to make this good for Alex and the neighborhood. Um, it's unfortunate because we applied for an electrical and building permit with the town of Foxborough and we were granted those permits and we moved forward and my company, uh, has invested, you know, upwards of fifteen to twenty thousand dollars into this project. Um, it's in the ground. Um, and and we are willing to, um, invest, you know, a few more thousand into making those amendments that we outlaid um, earlier in this, in this meeting, the, you know, lowering of the system, reducing the slope, adding on that, uh, that row so that it's not as high. Um, and we are definitely willing to talk to a a landscape architect to to put forth a, uh, very detailed plan to show exactly what that amendment's going to look like with the landscaping that Alex, uh, is agreeing to do after, after our job's complete.
So, Mr. Camille, the only thing I would say about all of that, which is lovely and I'm, and I, and I'm, and I'm a supporter of small businesses and I think generally speaking, this board is, is, uh, is um, pro enterprise, you know, in the town of Foxborough. We're, we're, we're not the kind of board that's trying to block people from doing business or or create jobs for people. The only thing I would say to you is, um, as a professional, uh, I recommend you clearly read the zoning bylaw before you just go to the building inspector and ask him for a determination because this is where you run afoul. If you had come to us in the beginning and then we all looked at the plan together with the neighbors and whomever in a public hearing session, you know, we may have avoided a lot of where we wound up. But, you know, and and I'm not saying this is a hundred percent, you know, uh, Isaacson, uh, you know, solar's fault. I'm just saying that, you know, um, as a professional, I think it's a requirement that, uh, uh, all professionals, what, whatever, whomever they may be, it's when, becomes familiar with how that, how that works and they read the zoning bylaw as well as read the building inspector's, you know, thing and and find out what's allowed, so that you don't run into problems like this.
Of course. Obviously, it's unexpected. Uh, we do everything on the front end to, uh, do everything by the book and and this was no exception. Obviously, didn't read the bylaws. We were relying on the HJ to, to, to help, um, but I fully understand. Definitely won't make this mistake in the future.
Uh, Kevin? Um, do we need to, uh, schedule another meeting and and have them, uh, uh, come back with the landscape plan and and and, uh, get it before we give the final determination?
Do you have a members' failure? We have to do that?
I'm sorry?
Put the requirements in any decision?
No, I think ba- based on what I'm hearing Jeff say and John say, we wanna see the plan before we give them an official yes or no.
Kevin, I don't think that that's unreasonable under the circumstances.
Kevin, I don't think that that's unreasonable under the circumstances and uh, given the, you know, season and time of year, I don't expect that anyone's going to be out there making alterations next Monday anyway. Uh, but I did want to ask a question of Paige, if I might. Uh, can you hear me, Paige?
Mm-hmm.
So the, the question would be if um, there are going to be modifications to this submission. And I'm not even talking about on the landscape variety or the buffering, but just on the uh, uh, structure itself. Currently, is the prior authorization in permit from the building department still in effect pending an approval on this special permit application? Or does there have to be a complete new application to the building department? I just want to kind of get that out on the table, at least for people to start thinking about. But I don't know the answer myself.
I believe that the permit is null and void and they'd need a new one, but I would imagine that something like they wouldn't charge a new fee or something. I mean, I don't, I can't speak to them, but I don't, yeah, I don't know for sure on that. But I, I, I think the paperwork, obviously there's to file new plans, no question asked. So that's the thing. And then usually you're going to want an application to go along with it. You're going to have to modify the application to reflect the new plan. So, and I think the current plan is invalid. I mean, the current permit is invalid. So I think there will be some sort of administrative review required by the building department. But I'm sure some consideration will be given, given that, you know, this is a complicated issue. And so I would agree in order to keep, because this seems to be really going on. Um, to sum it up, I think we just need to get a revised plan that um, shows the landscaping proposal that the board, you know, that our staff in the future can make sure we check the as-built plan and it's done to plan. And then also from a permit writing decision, Brad, I will need yeah, the plan to make sure it's clear to the person like me and Gabby. Um, the difference, you know, the, the sort of differences and the changes to the, the specs, you know? Um, so like you said, twelve and a half to eight feet, you know, it would be helpful if you could just maybe put a little box that sort of explains it. So that we don't have to do the math ourselves just because it's, you know, we kind of might get it wrong. So all I need, we need is a, is a very simple plan to make sure we can write a good decision if, you know, when the time comes reflecting the change from the beginning to the modifications made per the, the compromise. And those, I think, were what we need, um, you know, in advance of the next meeting, um, in order for the board to vote, move forward.
Uh, can I ask one quick question before we go?
Yes.
Oh, so it, it seems like three of the board members, uh, you know, are, are very for the uh, spirit of compromise. And two of the other board members might feel like, you know, the neighbors, you know, are hesitant or don't like it. Uh, you know, it seems like I'm getting a kind of a hesitancy on, 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 on your end. Uh, to vote my favor. I just want to know, now, you know, we come back, it's a, you know, beautiful landscaping, you know, a way to make sure that, you know, it's set up in such a way that nobody really sees the, the, the panels from the streets. Uh, would that, you know, change your mind of, of, on this project if we can make sure that, you know, the panels are seen at a minimum or if not at all because of the, you know, the landscaping?
What question, Kevin? Who on this? It's the five of us, right?
Yeah, John, John, it, you know, uh, John would attend. If, if someone was to not be here, John would vote, but other than that, it'll be the main board. Those five.
Hey, Alex, are you asking us where my head's at?
You, well, yeah, last time you kind of, you know, you said that, you know, your heart really goes out to, to me and my family and I really appreciated that. I appreciate it, you know? You spoke to me like a person, you know, and you didn't just treat me as just a regular, you know, just like a number, you know, next, next in line. And, you know, obviously, you know, I, I, you're, you picked up on something and I, you know, I hope that I, you know, alleviated your, you know, uh, perception that I'm like some sort of a bully, but I just want to make sure what can I do to, you know, maybe, you know, sell myself more in the right direction for you and the rest of the board in addition to this plan? Like, well, what else would you like to hear from the neighbors or me or, uh, what can, what can we do?
I, I don't, I, I don't think there's anything you can do. And I'll tell you right now, like, I don't know which way I'm voting. Um, I'm real, and the reason for it is, is I do think there was pressure. Um, right, right or wrong, I feel this way, but on the board, uh, you know, on the neighbors. And so I gotta kind of sit with that a bit and see where I end up. I, you know, the fact that the compromise, you know, you've, you've met with them, there's been compromise. You, you know, Brad has done a great job. Um, obviously helps. My heart does go out to you because of, you know, the, the way the process originally started. Um, I think I just got to get some level of comfort that the neighbors are truly on board with this and not just going forward that because of what could, what else could you do?
So maybe basically.
There's nothing you can say.
For reminding Brad's mission right now.
It's, it's gonna, it's gonna have to come from the neighbors and I'm gonna get that, so.
I think the sum total is, is if, if there is anybody on the board that knows for sure they, like, no matter what happens, they're against it. He's trying to suss it out because obviously this is always withdrawal without prejudice and he's going to go spend, you know, more money on a plan and whatnot to revise this. So I think, obviously, no one's on the hook to answer right now, but I think if, if you're in a position where you feel like you could never change your mind regardless of what you see, and I think that's the gist of it, because at this point, he might want to stop spending money. Uh, whether it's his or Brad's, I don't know at this point and, and do that, so. But I hear what you're saying, Tracy. I don't think that's too, so I think, I'm just trying to sum that up and
Yeah, you know.
Move this on. I don't think you need to, yeah, I think we can just move on with this.
So should we make a motion to continue the public hearing? Kevin?
I mean, I'm open to continuing the public hearing and, and unless, unless, like, uh, you, he just said, if there's, if there's uh, uh, not at least an ability for someone to be convinced based on a revised plan and, and, and a landscape correction, um, then uh, he, he, he would feel that he could not get um, a super majority and, and a special permit wouldn't be granted, that he would have the right to.
Yeah.
You know, withdraw.
Well, then, I mean, not to put my fellow board members on the spot, but I get where that, where Alex is coming from on that. I, I mean, Jeff and Ron and, and Kevin and Gary, I mean, where are your heads? Because I do think it's fair that he asks that question and gets some sort of indication from us.
It is, it is a very fair question because before you invest any more time and possible money.
Mm-hmm.
Where I'm coming from is I would vote no. I think we have, we have zoning requirements and restrictions for a reason. I think we not only have to listen to the current neighbors, we have to consider future neighbors. And I don't want to see a precedent started around town. So I am a no and I don't see that changing.
And what would that precedent be, Gary?
Well, I, I, you know, I just, just in the spirit of time, I think, why don't we take kind of a straw poll here and then?
Well, I'm curious about what that precedent might be.
Well, we're putting the ground, ground um, mounted unit in a small zone, small sized zone, uh, lot, which is not allowed in our zoning right now. And there's a reason for that.
Well, it's allowed by special permit.
It is allowed by special permit, right. And there, and there's a reason, because it could be some situations where it might not be detrimental to the neighbors. In this case, I think it's very detrimental, it's a very dense neighborhood. I don't see my vote changed, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Your title?
I'll give you my two cents.
Yeah, please.
And that is until this evening, I was dead against it. I've seen some changes uh, that have softened my view a bit. I'm not going to say that I'm going to definitely vote in favor of it, but I'd like to encourage the applicant to move forward with the balance of what he is proposing so that we can make an educated decision.
Kevin?
You know, I'm neutral on this. I mean, I would agree, I would agree with Ron that I, that going into this, when I first went down Maple Avenue and, and saw the, saw the structure through the trees and then drove up Maple Place and parked right next to it. Um, I was really uh, in disfavor. Uh, but I really do feel that um, uh, Alex and Brad have made some uh, some, some effort to try to make it better. Um, I'm not so sure that I hear uh, the uh, acquiescence of um, Mr. Kagan and Mr. Jakes and Mr. Uh, you, you know, and, and Pete uh, uh, Jepson that, uh, that they feel like they're bullied, but I feel like, you know, uh, uh, that they're, that just as uh, Mr. Uh, that, that just as he is trying to do the right thing and, and get what he needs for a solar system, they're also making an attempt to be good neighbors, you know, and not make this, you know, uh, uh, a Hatfield and McCoy thing in their neighborhood. So, um, I'm o- I, I'm open to giving it a consideration and I like Jeff's uh, and John's suggestion that, you know, if they're, if they're going to get a positive vote, it's going to have to be tight. And uh, something that we would be able to live with and that the neighbors would feel they got assurance from that it is um, as good as it could be made to be. And uh, and if we can come back to that and look at it and uh, you know, get an opinion from everybody based on the final outcome that it, that it, that it wound up better than they expected or could wind up better than they expected, then uh, then, then I, then I would, then I'd probably uh, could see myself voting in favor. If that doesn't happen, then, you know, I would probably, you know, I may not be able to vote in favor.
May I have my two cents, Kev?
Please.
Uh, I, I think I made pretty clear that I would be uh, looking favorably upon this application. But I think it's important to say there, Kevin, you're absolutely right. There is some element going on here of uh, trying to uh, work in the spirit of compromise. Uh, but also board members have to remember, this application, this type of installation can, there are ways this can be built by right, just as Mr. Jepson suggested. And he did not find those alternatives to be, you know, particularly attractive. Even, even less attractive than a modified proposal here. So any board member that wants to go down that path of being, you know, having an, a, a follow-up application that can be built by right and we know exactly what it would be, I would say, yeah, shoot this one down, have at it. But I, I think that this compromise approach is the best approach for all concerned.
So uh, do I hear a motion to continue the public hearing?
I'll make the motion to continue the public hearing to Diana. Do we have a time definite?
Um, the next meeting is February twenty-fifth. I don't have anything new on there, so we could put it for seven fifteen.
Make a motion?
But I ask, oh, this is my Corey. I'm um, I'm on a board in another town that meets that night. Um, it meets at six. Would it be possible for us to be put on last? I, we race through.
You might be the only.
Oh, well, then, then there isn't a possibility. Okay, that's fine.
Um, did you make a motion, Ron?
I did.
Second?
He did. All those in favor? Do you have a voice for?
Tracy, yes.
Yeah, we have.
Yes.
Kevin, yes.
Jeff, yes.
Okay, see you on the twenty-fifth.
Thank you very much.
Uh, I hope, I hope we can change your minds, especially uh, I believe, uh, Mr. Gary. I hope uh, I know you're definite no, but you know, I'm not one to quit. So hopefully then uh, we can make you have a change of heart.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you. Good evening.
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, everyone.
So it being uh, it being sometime past whenever, we have another, we have another informal discussion um, about Orchard Place. Um, so uh, we're ready for that to begin as long as other board members are prepared. Mr. Lovely, Mr. Buckley, whomever is going to present that?
I think I'll uh, be doing most of the talking tonight. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Uh, last time when we met with you, uh, I believe we left with a couple of questions for us to look into. And one was whether a private way could be used uh, to access a subdivision. And the other is, is what the public interest is, what, how this project would serve the public interest. So we'd like to discuss those things tonight. Um, I did submit a letter earlier today. I don't want to read it in, but I'd like to discuss what we've been working on and, and looking into since the last meeting. Um, it's a little bit difficult to find a case that says definitively that you can or cannot use a public, a private way to access a subdivision way. Um, what the cases do talk about is that the, whatever your uh, clear prohibitions are have to be set forth in your bylaw or in the subdivision statute. And so you, you really can't go beyond that. However, a planning board can look into whether access is safe and adequate and whether access is legal. So whether, whether a subdivision applicant has the legal right to access a private way for its new subdivision. Um, so while I was, I was unable to find any case law that directly says, yes, you can use a private way to access a new subdivision. Uh, the, the bylaw in Foxborough and the state statute are silent on that point. It's not expressly prohibited. And the cases essentially talk about uh, the planning board can look into the adequacy of access and the safety of access and the legality of access um, as part of its inquiry. And that's not beyond your uh, ambit. So um, and the cases, again, I was unable to find any that talk about, you know, yes or no on private ways. But the cases that I mentioned in my letter are all, many of them are talking about subdivisions that do come off private ways. And they, their holdings relate to, uh, yes, they can do it. No, they can't do it because they don't have legal access, but none of them expressly deal with the point. So it was difficult to really brief that issue definitively, but, you know, speaking with other um, land use attorneys, surveyors and engineers and stuff, it is done. It's been done in Foxborough. You know, it's certainly not um, to my knowledge, a requirement that every road that leads to a new subdivision has to meet modern subdivision standards. Um, you know, in order to, you know, your, your bylaw could say um, every, for, in order to build a new subdivision roadway, you have to prove that all of the roads leading to that meet subdivision standards. Then that is not in the regulations or bylaws. Really what the standard seems to be is whether similar to a frontage waiver plan, the planning board determines that there is safe actual access of sufficient width and grade to provide access to the subdivision roadway. So, um, and you, you know, here we believe that Orchard Place, if it's, it's a, it's a level straight roadway, it will be repaved and widened to eighteen feet and it will serve uh, four houses. So we believe the portion of Orchard Place that leads to the subdivision is certainly safe, adequate. Grade is good, width is decent, and it, it will work for those four houses. Um, so, and then we, we're also prepared to talk about the public interest, which really is what, what the waiver statute um, and regulations talk about is whether a project is in the public interest. And I think um, Mr. Buckley's going to put up um, a plan on the share screen if he could. All right, so to some extent, this, this plan will be useful as we uh, get into this. But here's what we came up with in terms of whether this project would be in the public interest. Some, some in general and some based on the requested issuance of the waivers. Um, so the Orchard Place will be widened. It will be safer for all users. So the Orchard Place will be widened. It will be safer for all users. Now, any dead or dying trees along Orchard Place will be, uh, cleaned up as necessary to widen the street. Mr. Lynch will need to meet with the condo owners and neighbors and hopefully come up with a plan to facilitate future maintenance, plowing, et cetera, of the roadway. The road, both Orchard Place and any extension of it will remain private so that the town will not have to plow, maintain or light it. Uh, if the waivers are granted, the paved and impervious area decreases from about 10,000 plus square feet to about 2,500 square feet of pavement and impervious. Uh, Mr. Lynch is willing to, uh, include fencing um, and some buffering as necessary to screen this from the neighbors. You can see Bill is moving the, um, hand there on the plan to show where, where the fencing would be. If we, if, if this is permitted, uh, with the waivers, Mr. Lynch will be able to assist the, the neighbor with the relocation of a couple of parking spaces in a shed that currently encroach on the right-of-way. Um, and, and he'll help her out. If the waivers are granted, there is actually a fountain, very dilapidated, as I understand it, located within the historic district um, on and on the 18 Baker Street parcel. If the waivers are granted, that can re- remain as-is. And essentially the 18 Baker Street lot can remain as-is. And if the waivers are granted, we don't intrude into the historic district at all. Uh, granting the waivers will save some mature trees and plantings, create natural buffering. Mr. Lynch will make a payment as he have, as he has in the past uh, for street trees, as I don't think there is really any area here where, where conventional street trees can be planted. They can be planted somewhere else in town where it's needed. Um, although these homes will not be quote-unquote affordable, they will be substantially less expensive than the, you know, very rare and limited other new construction in Foxborough. These will probably be in the $500,000 range compared to seven or 800,000 and more elsewhere for new construction. So it's substantially reduced for new housing in Foxborough. And also, this is, this would appear to fit sort of with some of the town's planning in terms of housing development. This is close to the downtown area. Walkable to downtown, walkable to the common. Um, and creates new housing and sort of it's, it's similar to an infill project um, as, as is discussed in the master plan. So, those are, um, what we think are the facets of this plan that are in the public interest.
So, can I make some comments back to you, Mr. Lovely?
Absolutely.
Number one is, we're back to the original plan, which is half a cul-de-sac and not a full cul-de-sac. You know, the, the, the arrow in the quiver that the planning board always has is with the full cul-de-sac design is that we could always say, build it. But you can't. You can't build a half a cul-de-sac. So that's, 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 that, that, that's an item that, that's been, you know, in the air since the, since the beginning of the hearing process or the this informal discussion process. The other, one of, you know, some of the other things are, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of waivers that are being asked for here. I can't remember the five or six at least. And, um, those waivers are, are part of what's, what's creating the, the, uh, less of a need to build a full construction, uh, you know, road or, or more of a, or, or more of a roadway that's, that would be closer to, to, to what was necessary. I know that, uh, Bill's now showing a different thing that, that would call for a full cul-de-sac, but that would be, be encroaching back onto Lot One. Um, and, and, and go over, and go over the line into that. Um, in terms of the, in terms of the, um, cost of the, the, the final housing and the comparison of a single-family home for $750,000 or $800,000, I think we all need to be honest here about the fact that the full price of the purchase of the, of Lot One and Lot Two um, included this land. And that with the sale of the house at the same amount of money approximately that the purchase was made on, um, there's no cost to this lane. So when you talk about building a home for $750,000 or $800,000, now you're talking about, okay, there's a lot price for that. And in this case, that lot price is de minimis because, you know, it's, it's going in a different direction. And I'm, this is not a slate against Mr. Mr. Lynch. I mean, he, he, he is, uh, you know, well-known to the board and he's done many favorable things and he's received favorable decisions from this board in the past for smaller things and even bigger things than this. But it's, this, you know, the, this is sort of a peculiar situation. And, um, just looking at it from a purely planning point of view, these are some of the warts that are sitting out there. This, this has nothing to do with any of the issues that might relate to the historic district or anything else. Um, these are simply, you know, can, does the board feel comfortable in allowing, um, uh, it to go forward based on what we see? And do those items that you call forward to us as in the public interest? You know, are, are we in agreement with that? And I'm not saying, I'm not saying we're absolutely not, but I think that I'm calling some of them into question so that we can discuss it.
Okay.
That's, that's my, that's my beginning response to, to what you've had to say.
Okay. So I just wanna clarify, so we could build the full cul-de-sac if it's required, as, as was shown on the plan. I don't know that the cost of land is really relevant to the subdivision process.
No, it's only relevant in the sense that you're, but that you're making claims that, that two half a million dollar homes are less, you know, are, are less affordable, are, are, are more affordable than a single-family home of $750,000 or $800,000. And I'm, my retort to that is simply that, yes, but in that, traditionally in a $750,000 or $800,000 house, there would be a land cost specific to that. And in this case, that land cost is not there. So it's not part of the planning process, but it is just, it's, I'm just making an argument back in terms of your valuation of the property.
Right, right. Yeah, so we're, obviously we're, the, I don't think Mr. Lynch would agree that this, no matter what happens, comes at no cost. It is probably less than trying to buy a lot right now in Foxborough would be.
I said de minimis. I didn't say no. There's, there's a cost.
There's substantial costs involved, but again, it's the creation of the housing that we're posing as the public benefit, not whether Mr. Lynch makes a profit or not. So.
I'm not opposed to Mr. Lynch making a profit. I'm not, you know, I, it's not about that. I, I'm just, I mean, I just, I, I just felt that your argument, I just needed to make a counterargument to it, that's all.
I appreciate that.
And I'm hoping to hear anything else that, the rest, he's got his hand up.
Yes, I do.
Please do.
Um, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't the litmus test prove to us you can do it without a waiver and then come to us for a waiver? What I'm seeing here tonight, Jeff, is wave a wave, a wave, a waiver, I can make it work. That doesn't cut it. That's not how we've been doing this.
No, I, I think we can build the conventional subdivision if we're required to.
Without a waiver?
Without waivers. We're asking for waivers because the waivers make a lot of good sense and avoid possible other issues. But we, my understanding is that we can build the conventional cul-de-sac. Obviously, it's, I, I guess it's kinda nuts to do that. And really, nobody ever does, but it could happen.
Correct. We don't ask people to do it. We ask people to show us that they can do it without waivers, without encroaching into historic district. And then we're amenable to making adjustments and granting waivers to make it an easier project. We need to see that.
You, um, I'm sorry, you need to see what in particular?
The, show me how you can do it as a conventional subdivision. Without.
You're, you're saying with, with a conventional.
That's what I want.
With a conventional subdivision roadway all the way to Main Street? Or?
Will you take over here, please? Mr. Buckley?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, I, I think what Ron, you're asking is, is, um, go back to the, um, you know, can we physically fit a cul-de-sac in there to the standard that the town requires for, you know, false subdivision? So let me just kinda open this back up. If I can get this open. So this is a cul-de-sac. It has, I'm gonna zoom in on it a little bit.
Bill, you're muted.
Bill Buckley, unmute yourself.
Yeah?
There you go.
About now, okay.
Yep.
So sorry, um, so, so here's a roadway, so a subdivision roadway is, is 50 feet wide. The layout itself is 50 feet wide. So, in this particular case, we show it, you know, this is only 25 feet wide. There's, there's no real good way to do it, but we can show it as 50 feet wide. We could run a sidewalk around the outside if we had to. This radius is 42 feet wide. There's paved radius inside here. And again, that is a, um, subdivision standard. Um, th- this radius here is a 35-foot radius. Again, that's a subdivision standard, um. So it, it can physically fit. It does encroach into the, uh, historic district. But again, we, we had that discussion at the last meeting, I think, where I think this board, or two meetings ago, asked town council to give an opinion on it. And he didn't. He didn't say that it was not, not allowed. He just said that, you, and I'm paraphrasing it, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, you should continue on with your process. And then, if, um, if it's necessary, then we would have to go, or that, that board would make a, or that committee would make a decision or make some type of argument a- against it that we would have to file and then we would proceed. That would be another piece of the pie. It's, um, everybody has their piece of the pie. You know, the board of health does, conservation, planning, and that, that local committee does too. So, um, I hear what you're saying about that, you know, typically when there's other boards that have, um, a say and that you, you would like some opinion on, for example, the conservation, hey, conservation, um, do you think they could really build this road before we grant the waivers? You know, that would be, um, that would be, um, appropriate and you've done it in the past. In this particular case, in my opinion, the local committee has already given their opinion. They don't want anything there. So it would be kind of a waste of our time to go for them. Uh, it's our opinion again, that we don't think that they have jurisdiction, even if the roadway is put into that area. That's our opinion. I mean, if we're wrong, then, you know, we have to deal with the consequences. But again, um, we're here before the planning board and I know, you know, because we're asking for waivers, you guys can consider lots of different things. It's really up to you. You know, we're just presenting our argument that, um, this is what we can do. And really what we're looking for, um, I think tonight perhaps, depending on how the meeting goes, is some type of informal guidance on how to move forward. Whether we move forward with a false subdivision or whether we move forward with, uh, a subdivision with waivers um, that you've kind of granted in the past. And it's, you know, of course, completely up to you.
Bill, could I throw a couple of questions out to you? And I don't really have the answers on these, but if you built this plan, which is a cul-de-sac laid out to, dimensionally laid out the subdivision control law that starts at private property lines and then is connected out to a public way by a 25-foot existing private lane? Is it, how can you call it a definitive subdivision? Can you call it a definitive subdivision?
Yes, uh, we believe yes, and I believe yes. Um, because you are not considering, um, the Orchard Place. We're not, Orchard Place is not part of the discussion as far as the subdivision control act is concerned, the way I read it. Other than the fact that I think that the board has the duty and responsibility to make sure that it's safe.
To review it for adequacy.
To review it.
That's very, that's very clear.
Which we.
Don't our subdivision rules and regulations require a, require a layout that, that's, provides a road into a, an area that's gonna be subdivided to be under subdivision control in order to be a definitive plan? And I don't have, Bill and, and Jeff and, and Joe, I don't have a definitive answer, but I can't get my arms around how you can do a definitive subdivision plan on a landlocked lot with zero frontage. Doesn't the sub- definitive subdivision have to stretch out to Washington Street and then ask for the waivers?
You know, I, I think.
That's a possibility, Bill.
Right. No, I, I hear you, John. I, believe me, I, I understand. It's not a silly question or an unreasonable question. I completely understand what you said and you said it at the last meeting and Jeff spent a lot of time, uh, researching it. And as he stated, he, you know, there's no definitive answer for that. Although some of the case law that he reviewed and cited and is in that letter to you, um, talks about subdivisions off of rights of way. And I'll give you examples in Foxborough. I think, um, we've done subdivisions off Camp Road. Camp Road, and I'm talking about the dirt part.
Wasn't that an ancient right-of-way that may have been accepted like back in the 20s?
No, the portion of Camp Road that I'm talking about is, um, Camp Road in itself, you're right, is an ancient way. It was never accepted. Um, but the piece I'm talking about is between North Street, is off of North Street and it dies behind the houses on, uh, Young Road, Edwards Road, Young Road, Edwards Road. So that was a subdivision. Um, and actually there were form A's on that, you know, voting outside. That was a private way. It was not a way done under the subdivision control law, never accepted by the town. Um, and actually, recently, there was quite a, I think they came before this board. I'm not, wasn't part of it, but I think that they were coming before the planning board for some type of, um, I, I don't even know, some type of affirmation that it was a town way so that they can get the town to actually pave it. And to my knowledge, they never did get that affirmation from anybody and they ended up paving it themselves. They spent the wrong money. So, so I think that that would be an example, John, of it. Um, and I can't, you know, I think that the planning board's purview lies in new construction, new ways. Whether or not it's a private way or an old way like Mill Street that's clearly nowhere near the town standard. So, you know, it's.
Bill, Orchard, Orchard Place as it exists today, is it, is it a parcel that hosts Orchard Way? Or is it three or four resements combined as part of the lots that have been conveyed that makes up Orchard Place?
Now, Orchard Place, Billy, I'll take that. Orchard Place is owned by the owners of the condominium.
Now, Jeff, what, what's the condominium?
The condominium is, uh, six and eight Orchard Place, which is. The condominium is Six and Eight Orchard Place, which is, as you go down Orchard Place, a couple hundred feet, it's a building on the left.
On the left, okay.
Okay, so that that.
But that's a, Jeff, it's your understanding that's a parcel that through the years has become identified as Orchard Place.
Orchard Place is is a parcel that's associated with the site of that two-unit condo building. But we have a very clear right of way over it.
Right, yeah, you you did a you did a very good job of showing title. And this, you know, to my, my, you know, my opinion is to improve the road in terms of safety and access, and the fire department has already said that's adequate enough. You know, my inclination would be say, yeah, I think I think that's true. But where I'm getting hung up is a subdivision, a definitive, if you want to call it a definitive subdivision within a parcel that is landlocked with zero frontage. I I just get hot burned, and I can't say, and I can't cite a legal precedence, but I really get hot burned on it.
So just to just to kind of help you with that, it it's not a landlocked parcel with zero frontage. It has frontage on the end of Orchard Place and actually along a side. So it is thirty or forty feet of frontage on the end of place.
Yeah, so you have you have frontage because you can recognize a private way that's constructed for frontage for a lot.
So so if this lot were were at right angles to Orchard Place, okay, and had a hundred feet of fifteen thousand square feet of area, we would be coming to your board and requesting a frontage waiver approval. And then your board may or may not grant it, but the standard would be, does it provide access of sufficient width and grade to the lot?
Yeah.
That illusory. So the private way in and of itself is really not that troublesome.
Yeah, but I I have to agree. I stand corrected that you can claim frontage from the end of Orchard Place.
And so the the bylaw and the statute, and this Billy's right, I did spend a lot of time trying to figure this out. Everything is just silent, but what the what the what it talks about is the adequacy of ways. Okay, now your your could change your bylaw to say any new subdivision has to prove that every road that leads to that subdivision has to comply with modern subdivision standards. You know, you might have to leave town if you enacted that.
Yeah, that's that's too much of a blanket.
But I mean, your but your bylaw doesn't say that, so.
That's 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 too much of a far reach.
We understand that it's a little bit of an unusual situation, both in terms of the the private access and the right of way and and the location of the lot. But it all kind of proves out, if you look at it carefully. The legality of the access is not an issue. The adequacy of the access is really not an issue. It would be unfortunate to require the construction of a of a subdivision roadway, and it would be kind of unusual looking as well to to put it on to the end of a twenty-five foot. But it actually wouldn't look that bad because, you know, usually for for this type of a roadway, I think the subdivision road width is either eighteen or twenty feet anyway, for a very short subdivision roadway that accesses under four lots. So on the ground, it would look a little odd to start a sidewalk at the property, wrap it around the cul-de-sac and end it at the other side of Orchard Place, but we we think that, you know, on balance, we've proved out the conventional, we've proved out the access, we've proved out the that the access is legal, safe and adequate.
What about the approach that this is an existing non-conforming lot? And ask it to be billable. It's non-conforming. It probably came before zoning.
Yeah, this, well, this this lot, it it's a little bit unclear on that. It's it's adjacent to eighteen Baker Street. So it's not, if this lot had been held in separate ownership, it that would be an easier case to make. But that lot has been held in separate ownership since, I think, nineteen forty-seven. Orchard Place predates subdivision. And it may predate zoning.
Yeah, subdivision was the late forties with the general law or early fifties, so.
Yeah. There may have been some type of, you know, workman's shop or building there in the forties. There's a there's a plan from nineteen forty-six, I think, that shows that that somebody owned it. It was in separate ownership, and there was actually some type of building on it.
Yeah, it's just, as I said, and and I can't put a, I can't recite a legal precedence, nor can I cite anything, the planning board rules and regulations, nor can I cite anything in subdivision control law enabling. It just troubles me that we are that we have to lay out a cul-de-sac on the end of a twenty-five foot right of way. Well, whenever, you know, in I've been doing land development projects since nineteen eighty-three, and I've never come across anything like this. You know, and I've extended many stubs that were left from previous subdivisions from twenty years ago. And that's that's a no-brainer. But here, this stub wasn't left for the purpose of an extension to receive a cul-de-sac. There's just a lot of things floating around for which I have no answer. So I'm just bringing that up.
Yeah, but there's no, there's no answer, but there's also no prohibition. So that's where where, you know, the board is really looking at the adequacy of ways. So and I know it's the board's practice with regard to a straight subdivision to some extent to prove out a straight conventional subdivision.
Yeah, that's standard.
That what that that doesn't appear in your regulations, as far as I can tell. It does appear in your in the OSRD special permit bylaw.
Yeah.
But basically, your board could say, we'll waive, you know, we'll waive this street down to thirty feet, knowing that a proponent can't do a fifty-foot right of way. There's no requirement in your bylaw that that couldn't happen.
No, you can come in and ask for a twenty-five waiver that the access road associated with this definitive subdivision plan exists in this twenty-five feet.
Can I interrupt? Can I interrupt?
Go.
We are getting in the weeds. We are getting in the weeds on an informal discussion. It is at the point now where this board just needs to make a decision. All right, do you want to do this or do you not? I mean, we are kicking around a ball that's not even at play. The the question here is whether you want to gamble. Is Mr. Lynch going to build this subdivision? And the neighbors need to understand that, that the risk and the reason why the board often grants these waivers is because they're fearful or they're concerned that a full subdivision will be built, and the town will be stuck maintaining it, and it'll be an eyesore and so on. So that is the risk of this project. If the board, but it's not even the risk of tonight because it's just an informal discussion tonight. So they still would have to go and have a public hearing, and we're going to do this all over again. And Mr. Lovely has a lot of great facts, but we haven't been able to verify any of them with our own counsel. But so I think the point is now, we're never going to have all the information. We're not going to know whether historic would grant a thing. We don't even yet know whether they're they need to grant a permit. We don't have the information, but this board just needs to decide one way or another if you're comfortable with these waivers so that this project can either go forward or not.
Well, that is probably.
I'm so sorry. I'm frustrated, but we.
It's probably in the best interest of the proponents to hear from the other members of the board. Kevin and I have spoken once. And they may want to hear what the other members of the board have to say.
I would agree. I think it's up to the board. We know how the people feel around it. We know how Mr. Lynch and him, his team feels. It's a tough decision. You don't want to let down the neighbors. You don't want to risk the, you know, having a cul-de-sac be built. Yet you don't want to, you know, suddenly give away the farm, and you know, if you do this for one, who knows what it's going to unleash in the future? And it's not consistent with your pack practices. So one way or another, someone's not going to like the decision. The key is, is that whatever you decide tonight isn't even binding, and you're going to have to go to a public hearing. So let's get into the meat of it.
Yeah, I think I think you're, thank you, Paige. I got to tell you right now, with all the waivers that are being asked for, I'm I'm not in favor. You know, I and, you know, I appreciate the whole, well, it'll be five hundred thousand dollars, you know, and and I respect Mr. Lynch as a businessman. He he bought a piece of property, wants to be able to split it and make money. But the way I see it is the benefit here is to Mr. Lynch and Mr. Lynch only. And so and back packed to what Paige said with past practices, we have not agreed to do something with this many waivers in the past. And the question is, why would we start now? Just my two cents.
I said my two cents, which started this thing, which kind of mirrors what Tracy just said.
Can I say one thing, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind?
Yes, please.
I just want to point out, it is a lot of waivers, but these waivers are the exact same waivers that have been granted in the past on similar projects. It's it's the waiver not to build a cul-de-sac, the waiver not to build a sidewalk, the waiver not to put in curbing, the waiver to cut down the width of the roadway. They really are all the same waivers that we've asked for in the past for Pine Street, East Street, South Street, you know.
They all been asked for, sorry, Bill, but have they all been, I I think when this first came up, we asked you if there was a develop something similar where all these waivers were asked, the answer, what were asked for and granted, and the answer was no.
No, well, if I said that, I'm sorry. The answer is yes. So the list of waivers is, if you go back and look at those last three that I just mentioned, which are the last three, it's all the same waivers. It's really all the same waivers. So not, I just want to point that out so we're not under a misconception that this is something different. It's really the same. What's what's odd about this one is what John and I just spent, you know, twenty minutes talking about is is off of a twenty-foot, twenty-five-foot right of way. But but as far as the waivers go, it's the same waivers.
It's the first time they've been applied to one particular project, so many waivers.
No, no, Gary, not really, because they've come before us in the past with similar applications, but they were much more cut and dried where you could physically show without any question, without a private way being involved, that they could do the conventional subdivision, and then we would consider granting waivers. This has got more, this has got more stuff in it. So my take at this point is, guys, I kind of, you know, mirror what Paige said, let's figure out what you want to do and decide to come back in front of us with an official application. And we'll we'll hash it out. I mean, we're beating the horse to death.
Just a minute, Mr. Kraus. Do you want to hear from Mr. Peterson and Mr. Whitehouse?
Sure, Kev. And I think that what Ron just said makes sense in a certain context in that as a hypothetical, if the board basically said, no waivers, we're not going to go down that road in this context, go ahead and come in with a conventional application. That application gets approved, and before the applicant goes forward, wouldn't it be possible, as a hypothetical, at that point to say, hey, before we do anything crazy that's going to cost you more money, and that's going to be less in the best interest of the town, of the abutters, for all the reasons that we're talking about here, then possibly we could forge a new path going forward. I don't know if that's the best approach, but it it has some logic, I think, under the circumstances. But also, you know, the issue, until the issue of the historic district is settled, you know, one way or another, wouldn't that take a conventional filing to really settle that issue? Do you understand what I'm saying on that?
Yes.
Because otherwise, there would be no need to pursue that historical district matter. It just would be an irrelevant matter if the waivers were granted upfront.
If you're asking us that question, Jeff, I don't know if you're talking to the members or us. I mean, the we would, we would go, we would go forward, we would file a full subdivision. And then you would be under the subdivision control law, you would be, you'd have statutory period, you would have to act within. The only board that you, under your regulations, can take into account is the Board of Health because everything is by right. You, it's check, everything is in the affirmative. If we do this, you will do that. So in my in my memory, under the regulation, the only board that has anything to say other than you that would hold up your statutory period would be the Board of Health. So so I guess the answer is partly yes. We could just say, look, you have ninety days to make a decision, make the decision. It really has nothing to do with the Historic Commission. They have no say in it under the subdivision control by law act. Of course, you could take into account anything you want, but in my reading of the statute, it's, you know, once you get into the subdivision control, it's it's very clear. Do this. If you do this, we give you a permit. It's not discretionary. So that's what we would aim to do, is we would go to meet every portion of the regulation. And then once, you know, your consultant reviewed it and checked off the blocks, you would, you would make a decision on that. But it really has nothing to do with the Historic Commission or anybody else except for the Board of Health, where they're the only other board that we would have to show that, you know, the lot perks, I guess. Or they they could object. They have forty-five days, I think, to object. And if they fail to object, then it's presumed to be affirmation. So I think I answered your question. Yeah, we, and we could also do what you said. We would come in, we could permit the whole thing, and then at the end of the day, you could say, let's, let's, let's talk about granting some waivers here, maybe in exchange for some buffering or some trees or some plantings or something else that I haven't thought of. Yeah, we could definitely do that.
Right.
Before the definitive plan was closed.
Right. And the only reason I raise that prospect is because there seems to be a sense that, you know, if the waivers weren't granted upfront, that that this project would be impractical or somehow could not go forward for for a number of reasons.
Right. That was my point like an hour ago, Jeff. So.
Yeah.
Like I said, guys, if you feel comfortable, bring it forward, bring it forward. Well, you know, you've got to prove beyond a shadow of a doubt it can be done conventionally, and then we'll look at the waivers. End of story.
Harry, you have anything you want to add?
No, I'm enjoying the conversations. But yeah, no, I agree. We got to, we got to stop this informal stuff. We've got enough of that. Let's just proceed as our normal procedures, and we'll take it from there.
Well, I I think you've heard enough from the board, you know, about about that. And I think that that that's probably the way you're going to have to proceed, and we'll see where we go when we get to the process. You're welcome to talk, Mr. Kraus, but I mean, I'm just going to tell you, there's not much more to say.
I I know, but Kevin, a couple of things you said is that this, if 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 the subdivision or if the cul-de-sac comes into the historic district and destroys the fountain as well, town council was very clear that it is a structure and that it comes before the historic district commission, when we'd have a public hearing and and go through the process. That's all I have to say.
Okay. I don't think there's anything more to say. I mean, I think that, you know, that that you're hearing it from enough members that you're going to have to proceed and see when we get to the real process. Because we're just beaten. Is there something you'd like to say, Mr. Lynch?
No, I was bouncing my my pen on the table. No, I.
No, I, I hear, I, I hear what everybody's saying, and looks like we'll have to file a subdivision plan. I mean, the intent of the informal discussion is to feel, hear from the board, and that's what we're hearing. So, I, I think there were public benefits, but not, I guess, to outweigh everybody's view at the moment.
Okay. Is there anything else on the agenda, Ms. Duncan?
Oh. I sound like Ms. Duncan, don't I? Okay, do you want a motion to adjourn, Chair?
Yes, please.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Roll call vote.
Tracy says aye.
All right.
Take care of you.
Good day, everybody.